Okay, everyone, so that ends our Otisville presentation, so thank you for participating. Thank you, Mendela. We want to thank the students and their parents for coming out on a cold night. We also want to thank, as you can see, we have some support, our teachers over here, to support us, so thank you for supporting our colleagues and us as a building. And, uh, students and also, well, Mrs. Fralinas, Megan L also had, um, they volunteered to have their kids come and do this presentation with us, so thank you so much. That was very nice. And then, students, I have a little, Mrs. Griffin and I have a little gift for you, okay? So, you guys can leave, you don't have to stay through the rest of the board meeting, and we have a little something for you, so thank you, board members, for participating in our project.
Ms. Downey, Ms. Griffin, we want to thank you. Ms. Walsh, Ms. Ulbricht, we want to thank you for being here, for all our teachers coming out and supporting, especially our students who came out here and helped our board members. Uh, so thank you very much, everybody, and make sure everybody gets home safely.
Great job, guys.
All right, uh, next on my list for everybody is a motion to have a meeting change, meeting date changed for the Board of Education. Uh, motion to change date of Board of Education, Board, Board Meeting and Finance Committee Meeting currently scheduled from February twenty seventh, twenty twenty five, to February twenty sixth, twenty twenty five. Do I have a motion?
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion?
Just, uh, I want to thank everybody for moving in, we have a number of board members that would like to attend the first-ever girls' state wrestling competition, and it will be on that day, uh, the twenty-seventh, so we want to give our board members and everybody an opportunity to be there, so thank you for that, I appreciate it. Yeah, still time this night, same, same time. Five-thirty for the five, Finance Committee, five o'clock, Finance Meeting, six-thirty for the regular Board Meeting. Next, I just want to go over the budget development process. Uh, as you know, you're going to be receiving some reminders tonight from us, uh, the first couple sets of budgets ahead of time, so if you have time to take a look at them. Uh, our budget process will begin on February thirteenth at five P M., and we will have additional meetings on February twenty-sixth, March thirteenth, March twenty-sixth, and April tenth. All of those meetings will begin at five P M. prior to our regularly scheduled Board Meeting. Uh, Finance Committee meetings will also be recorded and put out, uh, the following day, uh, so that our community can see all the work that is being done, uh, by our Finance Committee. And again, uh, we just received, and you'll have in your board report, uh, this week, uh, the breakouts of the state aid runs that we have. I've also attended a meeting today, uh, with, uh, my organization, NISCUS, New York State Council of School Superintendents. Uh, again, they are going to not touch whole harmless this year. Uh, we weren't one of those districts, we actually did, uh, pretty good on the increase in foundation aid. They did make some changes to the formula, uh, seemed that it did not affect us, uh, so we're, we're in a, uh, an okay position, a fairly neutral position moving forward in the budget process, uh, so we will see where it goes, okay? So we're in the process of working through the task cap formula as well, and we'll have that out to you hopefully in the next couple of weeks of where we stand, once we have all the numbers in place, okay? Any questions on our budget development process? Okay. Uh, it's moving incredibly quickly. Uh, you know, for, for those of you with some milestone years with your students, uh, it, it will go even faster. Mr. Montague, I know you may have somebody moving up into the, into the middle school?
One going into the middle school?
Ms. Reynolds, somebody moving into the middle school potentially? It, it goes very, very quickly, so enjoy every moment of it. So, as I said, enjoy every moment of it, because it does go very, very, very quickly. Next, I have approval of NISBA lobby day expenses being resolved with Board of Education on recommendation superintendent approves the expenditure of up to seven hundred dollars for Joseph Flaherty, William Cooper, and Ethy Monaco to attend lobby date, the New York State Capitol on February twelfth, twenty twenty-five, and be further resolved with Board of Education on recommendation superintendent approves the reimbursement of district-established conference travel mileage costs. Do I have a motion?
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion?
Just that, uh, Mr. Flaherty, if you could roll the, the people up in the audience continue to listen to us. Or start listening. I know, uh, they, they made a breakthrough last year, I doubt that maybe, I don't know, but, um, uh, I think they, they heard us last year a little bit, or understood us maybe, I don't know.
Well, hopefully, Mr. Scoop is, because he was, in his, um, initial announcement that he was writing to be the chair of the DNC, said that they have to start listening to people, so, um, you know, although they listen, that, um, we need action.
Action.
In addition to the listen.
A hundred percent. So I spoke that our efforts there continue now.
We should keep trying.
That's all we need to do.
We keep going up, we're in flight to good flight.
That's all we need to do.
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Okay, next, my final, uh, item on my list here is the regionalization opt-out. Uh, as you know, sort of months ago, we discussed with you that, uh, the state wanted to have us do a lot of work around regionalization. Uh, there is a tremendous amount of reporting of data that is already at the state, uh, that they already have, that we were going to have to put together again. Uh, we felt it was not necessary for us to participate in that. One of the things that we do very, very well here in the Orange, Ulster, Bosse's, uh, component districts, uh, we do a lot of sharing of services, I think, as you see, uh, all of the different, uh, cross-contracts that we do, uh, to try to make sure we're saving money and working everything through Bosse's. Uh, we share, uh, we do, uh, common bus runs with other districts to save money. We, we do a tremendous amount to reduce cost, and we are already doing those things. Uh, there was a significant pushback from around the state regarding regionalization, because a lot of other areas do the same thing we do here in Orange, Ulster, Bosse's, and it was a tremendous amount of work for, uh, not really much gain, that we felt, because we're already doing those things. The state finally gave us the opportunity to opt out of the regionalization piece, uh, because they, they heard from many, many different districts across the state talking about what I've talked about here, so we have decided to go with the opt-out. We've sent the letter ahead, uh, in your, uh, board, board agenda tonight, you should see, uh, the letter received back from the state that they acknowledged receiving our, our letter telling them we were going to be opting out, and that tonight we'd be voting on that publicly for the, for the board to take that vote. So with that, be resolved with Board of Education consultation with the superintendent of schools hereby elects not to participate in the regionalization planning process and any other requirements as set forth in the Commission's Regulation eight, N Y C R R, one twenty-four dash two. Be further resolved with Board of Education hereby ratifies the action of the superintendent of schools in signing the opt-out letter prior to the board approval to meet the state education department's January fifteen, twenty twenty-five deadline. Do I have a motion?
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? Being that there's none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Montague. The next item on the agenda is the Human Resources portion, we need to move this to G P M.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty, we have a motion to approve the retirements reservation positions of policies, run position creations, amendments, and appointments as listed.
Second. Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion?
Just a very big thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Lewis, over. Uh, just, I want to say, uh, a big congratulations and thank you to our retirees listed on here, uh, they have a tremendous amount of years of service in the district, and we wish them all the best in that next step in life.
I just wondered how many types of positions we've heard to have yet before we abolish this?
Go ahead, thank you. So, we, we went from a type of position to a certain position, so.
Oh.
No, we're not even, we're. Some amount of people. We, we have persons moving up, seeing type of position, and same number of people not being changed.
Ms. Lewis, we just had a clarification from the clerk, who did the, uh, the, the motion, who did the second? Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Thank you. Next, I come on the agenda, this is your personal self, sir, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty. Good evening, please refer to the executive summary and board docs. Committee on Preschool Special Education met on three days, in December, and four days in January, fourteen students were reviewed. I ask for a motion to approve the arrangements of the recommended placements by the committee, uh, preschool special education as listed.
Second. Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? Being that there's none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Committee on Special Education met on six days in December and eight days in January, forty-six students were reviewed, and I ask for a motion to approve the arrangements of correctional placements by the committee on Special Education as listed.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? Being that there's none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Vincent. Next item on the agenda is the Business portion, we need to move this to Mr. Montague.
Thank you, Mr. Withero senses apologies, he was feeling a bit under the weather, uh, so we told him it's probably better to stay home. Uh, first up, we have the, uh, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Valley Central School District Health Services Contract, be resolved with Board of Education on recommendation of the superintendent approves the Health Services Contract for twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty-two cents with Valley Central School District for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year for sixteen Minnesota Valley Central School District students that attend non-public schools in the Valley Central School District. Do I have a motion?
Second. Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? Being that there's none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Next, we have the approval of the capital project change orders being resolved with Board of Education upon recommendation superintendent schools approves the change orders as listed in your agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion?
I, 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 I already know the answer is one of the five. These are just, uh, when they got this plan, Melvin, these are just those couple.
The, the, the deducts that we had, yes.
We had.
Correct.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Next, we have acceptance of grants funds, uh, be resolved with Board of Education upon recommendation superintendent accepts the state and municipalities to the SAM grant in the amount of fifty-four thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars and eleven cents for the purpose of purchasing Epilogue laser engravers.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion?
I do know you had sent a request in, uh, for a couple of board members may want to come and see those laser engravers working, I'll work to get some dates out for all of you, uh, work with Mr. Tithill, and then, uh, some other requests for other visits around the district, so we will make sure that happens for you. I'll put some dates in for you to see, okay?
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Next, uh, authorization to authorize increase in budget technology equipment, and that is from the SAM grant we just did, be resolved with Board of Education on recommendation superintendent authorized the increase in the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget in order to reflect grant funds with the designated purpose of purchasing Epilogue laser engravers for the high school. The increased amount of fifty-four thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars and eleven cents as follows, uh, or as listed where the revenues and expenditures are.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? Being that there's none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Next is the acceptance of the budget transfer report, be resolved with Board of Education on recommendation superintendent acknowledges receipt of the budget transfer report for the month of December, twenty twenty-four.
Second. Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? Being that there's none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Next is the approval of warrants being resolved with Board of Education on recommendation superintendent accepts the claims orders report for the following, for the warrants as listed.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? Being that there's none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Next, treasures report for November of twenty twenty-four, be resolved with Board of Education upon recommendation superintendent acknowledges receipt of the treasures reports for the month of November, twenty twenty-four.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? Being that there's none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Next is the quarterly revenue reports, be resolved with Board of Education upon recommendation superintendent accepts the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five second quarterly revenue report.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion?
No problem.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Finally, we have the extra classroom activity quarterly report, be resolved with Board of Education upon recommendation superintendent accepts and files the extra classroom activity quarterly report for the period ending December, twenty twenty-four.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? Being that there's none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Thank you, Ms. Montague. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Reports section, and we'll start over with the Policy Committee Report.
So, yes, so the Policy Committee met on January seventh, reviewed about thirty policies or so, uh, there were not any significant changes to the policy, most of it was, uh, uh, some, uh, wording changes, something added, some things removed, or certain policies that were duplicative, and so they were moved, uh, obviously all this was done in collaboration with our, um, council, and, uh, really make sure that our policies are as, um, aligned with, um, state conditions. So, um, nothing too exciting to report there, but, uh, appreciate the committee's time on swipe, and, uh, Mr. Chalk.
Kato.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Policy Updates. This is relative to the Policy Committee meeting, the policy that we've viewed, be resolved with Board of Education upon recommendation superintendent approves the tax, also the biggest and omniscient. Thirty-four twenty, fifty-one forty, fifty-six thirty, fifty-six eighty-one, sixty-one twenty-one, sixty-one thirty, sixty-one fifty, sixty-four eleven, that's omniscient. Seventy-one ten, seventy-one twenty, seventy-one thirty-two, seventy-three twenty, seventy-three fifty, seventy-four twenty, seventy-four seventy, seventy-five twelve, seventy-five twenty-two, seventy-five thirty, seventy-five fifty-five, seventy-five fifty-two, seventy-five fifty-three, eighty-one ten, eighty-one thirty, eighty-two ten, eighty-two eighty, eighty-three twenty, eighty-three thirty, eighty-three forty, as recommended by the Airborne Bosse's Policy and Policy Services District Council on the Minnesota Valley Central School District's Policy Committee for First Read. Second. Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? I, I, I think, right, thank you very much.
And those are the policies that I think everybody had, we had them out to everybody in October, and I know it was a lot, we, we gave you a couple of months to read through them. And, and I think some people were, I think some people were happy we moved the original policy meeting a little further, just so they could go through them again, so.
And, and just remind everybody that, uh, several years ago, we went through the entire policy manual, so, a couple of years, um, to revise the entire policy manual, and get it up to speed and up to date, and then, now doing these, these, uh, these quarterly reviews, and, um, so we're keeping up to date continuously, and, uh, making sure we don't hold on to it all again, and keep the policies where they need to be.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Uh, next, I'm, I'm on the agenda, is the Cox Report. Um, it was a remote meeting, but basically it was about, which is kind of, um, germane to what's going on with the governor. Um, the Milltown School District, some of the years ago, they have a, uh, a no-cellphone policy in their, in their high school, and, um, you know, the, the district superintendent and several of the administrators, and they said, uh, in the beginning, it was, it was not good, um, they had to do a lot of ju- adjustments to, to what was, uh, what they needed to do, and they came up with the Yanda pouches, which they, they say are pretty good, they don't have a percent compliance, but they have, uh, great deals compliance, um, they kind of alleviate the fears of the community by, um, if a student had to make a call, they could take the pouch to like a designated area, open it up, and, and make a call to a parent or something, so, um, because they said they, the community was concerned about like, what if, what if I, you know, my child has a babysitter after school, or something like that, so they, 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 they kind of put that in the mix to, um, alleviate those concerns that, that the student needs to get in contact with a parent or family member, they will have an opportunity to do so during the school day.
Right, they go to the school thing.
Well, I, I think there's, you know, they could do that, but I guess.
In my day, it would happen.
Any internet-connected device, I just, I was having.
Has to go into the.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna send you a, um, their PowerPoint presentation as well, um, which I, which I had sent to you. But, and, um, go and put it in the board report. You know, it was very informative that, like, you know, they said they had a lot of hiccups during it, and, um, you know, they adjusted it, and, um, they, they, they said, you know, the students kind of bought in after, you know, you have to get by when you do these things, and, um, you know, it took a while for them to get the buy-in, but they got the buy-in, because they, they, um, they were clear what the intent was, they were clear with communication with, with their, uh, community, and, um, they, they, they felt that like, they were distracted still learning process, so that they wanted to take that out of, they wanted to take that out. This very well may be mandated to us in this, in this, in this, uh, this upcoming budget book.
Uh, thirteen point five, thirteen point five for, uh, for, for potential pouches, so. We, we had a presentation today from the NISCUS, uh, lobbyists that we have, and our, you know, NISCUS attorneys, and, and one of the things that Greg Burke had said was, there is a lot of pushback on this, uh, from across the state. The governor is, has, has dug her heels in a bit, uh, but he thinks something is going to get done, but there is an understanding that this may not be a problem in, in a lot of districts, and that they may want to come up with a different approach to this, where there is more flexibility offered to districts on how to approach this. Again, here with us, you know, none of our elementary students have cellphones out, you know, if somebody has one and it's in their bag, it's fine, as long as it doesn't come out, same with our middle school students and everything, high school students, it's really at the discretion of, you know, the classroom they're in and everything, you know, and we seem to, we seem to work okay, but it isn't, isn't perfect, you know. I had another district tell us today, one of the things that they did, uh, moving to the Yanda pouch, was that students were warned that you don't have the cell phone out. However, uh, you know, they don't have it in the pouch, as long as you're not breaking the rule, you know, you're, you're fine. First time is a warning, second time you get a Yanda pouch, and now you're required to have that in there, you know, and there's some difficulty in managing that, I think, no matter what you look at, there's difficulty in any, any of the approaches you take with this, and trying to manage this, you know, and it, and it does become an administrative lack of effort nightmare at times to, to manage some of this, you know. And then there's the flip side of it, where students have to learn at some point in time to work with these devices. And don't forget, they're with us only a hundred and eighty days, and seven hours a day, where are they for the other seventeen hour days, and, you know, seventeen, seventeen hours a day, and then the other hundred and eighty should take, where, where are they at?
Landing back to the line, too.
Can I ask a question from the clerk's standpoint? When we made the decision, my class turned on the board, it was in the hopes that the cell phones would become a key. Do you find that your teachers believe that's been true, like, or not discussed? Do you have any insight on that?
I do, like, I would say maybe that, that the teachers, some, some teachers embrace the technology, and some do not, which is certainly their choice to do so.
Right.
So it's, it's kind of on a case-by-case basis.
So you did see some policies?
Yeah. In a day, um, I'm not sure how long ago it could be, uh, the, uh, device policy, except the use policy at the high school, but the hope at that point in time was, as Ms. Montague suggested, you know, rather than taking the device from kids and saying, you know, to , it was a posture sticking its head in the sand, saying the problem doesn't exist, um, try and provide students an opportunity to find ways to use it productively, like.
In an attorney way, yeah.
Right, um, knowing that our responsibility is to make their career college, career ready, so if you graduate basically when you go to college, you know, am I going to stand over your shoulder, stand over your cell phone way? If you have a job, am I going to stand over your shoulder, stand over your cell phone way? I guess they will, they'll say, you know.
Right, you're fired.
Right, but, you know, so that was kind of the concept at that point, was try to find ways to provide students an opportunity to learn how to use devices in a responsible manner, um, and I, like I said, some, some of the teachers are encouraged to use some devices, and some would just prefer for students not to have them out. I can say from, from speaking to high school administration, um, they're, they're, they deal with far fewer cellphone issues today than they did when they, 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 because teachers do have an opportunity in the classroom to make a decision about whether or not it's going to have them out or not, and, and there are some students who don't follow the rules first, and there are, you know, rules first we do, so.
Anybody else have a question?
Uh, my question is very similar, uh, as, you know, Eric was new to high school, um, now says she uses her phone for sort of classes, and we're over at it all, um, you know, I say let the phone away, and she says, no dad, I'm using it for whatever she might kill, so.
The, the issue we have is that, um, clearly, um, a lot of bad stuff does happen on social media, and students do bully each other on social media, and, um, you know, they harass each other on social media, unfortunately, a lot of these places have outsets.
Yes, it happens.
Right, and so, you know, back to the day, you have a problem on Friday, they go home, they don't have any interaction for the weekend, but clearly, they'll have it down, they have a problem Friday, they harass each other, won't get along on social media, and they come to school on Monday, and, yeah, and then it all, all melts, right? So it's, it's, I understand the concept, I know the governor would like to have accomplished here, um, but certainly, if they solve the symptom, I'm not sure it's going to solve the problem.
Takes a lot of work, and that.
Well, I have, it, it takes your parents to be involved, and it takes corporations to be involved, and if, there's, there's a number of things that may involve, you're looking to solve. I think it just sort of, look perfectly as if you're, you're fixing a symptom.
And I agree with what you said, Mr. Montague, it's our job, you know, as, as Peter Serres, to prepare these young men and women for work and for school after year. And I'll use my business example, um, we're using technology, like, you need to know how to use technology, even in my own business, I mean, between just basic emails and stuff like that, and, I mean, you teach, some people have new emails, and whatnot, I mean, so the X is important in any, in, in world today, you know, I'm going to say, yes, we should, or no, we shouldn't, I don't even know what we stand in that world, and I didn't know where I stand in that world, so I understand they have the distraction, but they are a useful tool as well.
I think you're going to have the opportunity over the next couple of months for the budget process for New York State to start to figure out where, where. for New York State to start to figure out where, where we stand on. If there's pluses and minuses.
It goes back.
You have to really kind of weigh, weigh, weigh it out and see what it is.
And a compromise.
It does.
I see that.
That's where we think it's. There's going to be some financial input and, and the hope is the recognition of the fact that it's going to be different across different districts, that you can't just put one, you just can't put one thing in place.
Sir, the only other thing I would weigh in on is, is kids are important. And I think a lot of times as adults, we forget how industrious they can be. There's a lot of problems. A lot of the schools I've talked to that have put these kinds of steps in place, provide kids with access, it's not enough ways to get around. So, you know, we have, we're very fortunate to have a very good tech team, a gentleman Brian Beating, along with Duna, Charlie, our network security. He is on the wall and every single day, he's putting in place new steps to feed kids who are trying to get around our network. And his kids, they, they know what we're doing.
They're industrious.
They talk about schools, they talk, they talk, they know that one thing was considered as they have ghost phones. So they put a ghost phone in their Yanda bed and they have another folder menus and stuff. So it, it's just one way to get around. So there's, it's, again, it's not going to be an all be all, but.
I feel like that's the most simple way to get around it that they, that's about.
Someone got her phone taken away one day and she kept on crying and I was like, we had it out. You know, she wants me to go back to the school because she forgot to look at it. Do you want to wait till tomorrow? Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Next item on the agenda is their official events. Mr. Monahan, since I'd like to go first.
Well, it is that time of year again. We are starting to talk about graduation and it is that time for the annual Minnesota Project Graduation Tricky Tray. And we are looking at the Tricky Tray on Saturday, March twenty-second. At five p.m., the calling will be at six-thirty. We have the snow date scheduled for Sunday, March twenty-third. Doors would open at one p.m. Calling will begin at two-thirty. So we're hoping for no snow that will run on the March twenty-second. But I know each year, the board puts together a basket. Mrs. Reynolds, I wanted to know if you would be. All right, great. She, she was always our pride. You're right. You're absolutely right. So.
Listen, it's everything hit me not to rejoin that group, but I just don't have the time.
So, Mr. Rose, would you take over your former duties for Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes, I will do a one minute whenever that happens.
Yep.
You guys can give me ideas of what we need, like.
Perfect.
For a basket.
We appreciate it because it's always nice to have the board contributing to the Tricky Tray.
Yes, we do every year.
Yeah. So, so thank you for letting me go first. I know. You bring up a very good point. Mr. Cooper?
I have a couple of things that I attended. I attended the Section Nine Wrestling Duel where Minnesota, the authorities will represent Section Nine in Syracuse on February first. I attended the National Honor Society induction ceremony where I believe it was sixty-six.
Sixty, sixty-three.
Sixty-three. And I attended last night the Otisville Good Create Band Concert where we heard two celebrity performances from two of our programs.
They're there. I don't remember celebrity.
But that was very good.
Is it very good?
Excellent.
Um, I, well, I attended the policy meeting. And that was, yeah, Mr. Cooper, they two sat together and we shared the, you know, like, I, who knows, you guys, that's why, that's serious, that we like that. So we have a group that handles that. I was also, both nights, I officiated the first night of the section manuals. I was able to watch our warriors, you know, prevail there in one of the, the semis and of course the finals. I was there too to watch them. Amazing, amazing performance. And that was, that was great. I did catch a mod fight wrestling match the other day. And I just wanted to touch on that, again, going back to our younger coaches, Mr. Federer and, and Mr. Corvayas, one of our newly hired phys ed teachers. And the kids are continually lying and that's awesome. And the enthusiasm with those guys, it just, you know, you would call your wrestling match. They have those kids, I, I sat on the, you know, Minnesota side with the kids. And they're sitting there good and, you know, they're cool around and they do their wrestling, all cheering for their, you know, their fellow teammates. And it was just, it was just great. Because not only will the mod fight team be the, the voice program, there's a number of girls and they'll, they'll continue to pull up, you know, to the high school girls wrestling team. So again, really awesome stuff to, to watch. I also did one of the NHK's induction and that's just like, I mean, that's just, that's really a whole, a whole thing and something that I would never know, but like part of that. You know, it could be laughed about that, that it's super. But again, it's really, really great to have all these kids. And again, I know my daughter is striving to hopefully be part of that next year, because that's all I have to hear about. So I brought the handkerchief and I showed that to you and I said, you know, these are the fillers. And I was kind of going over all the things. It's, it's, it's really great. I actually showed up super late. I was in the parking lot and the hospital was filling, finishing up last night. So I did unfortunately miss that. But I also did, again, I want to give my usual shout out to Otisville. I enjoy coming here. Again, I'm a little bit biased because not only I, my second child, Anthony, he's a great year. And it's just a very special place here with very amazing people that I've worked with the last, oh jeez, I don't even know, a long time, right? Since Federer was in here. And it, it's just great. We love everyone here. I love coming here. I'm going to marry more. And it's great. We always get support here and we always support this place. I'm going to miss that. My child will be moving out to the middle school next year. I'm going to miss it, but I do plan to still have my normal check-ins and stop by and say hello when I'm, well, I won't have nothing to drop off anymore, but I think I'll just stop in and say hello. It's always, it's always good. And again, to touch on what they were talking about, just a simple hello. And again, I'll use my own childhood as an example and whatever. I had a conversation with his dad a few weeks ago. Just a simple hello to my son in the morning, they realized something was going on. And that's awesome. You know, that shows the care and we know that that's happened here, but it just, you know, it, it makes me smile and just that everyone in this building and our whole district here, they're looking out for our kids all the time. They're looking out for these guys all the time. And just a quick call from his dad, they were on it, he took care of it, and everybody little bus to show around. And it just, just, just that simple love, like they said, I mean, it is amazing because again, I see it happen. So I see it happen so I can say, yes, it happens and it works and it goes on. Again, extremely excited and, you know, shout out to all you Otisville people, everybody. I, I do appreciate everything, me, my wife, my whole family. I mean, we're going to, of course, we're going to miss you. I don't know if you guys are busy at, we're going to, we're going to miss you here. We know, we know you guys love them. We, we do. We really do. And that's all I have.
I attended several mod fight boys in Little Rock for the basketball game. I like basketball. I understand. So I try to go to other things, but then we have a grandchild, so I may start showing up with grandkids.
Like teen do lacrosse and they curl us and boys to four.
I do want to share with the board, last night, we presented two awards. Last night, we had Coach Devin Gallagher and Coach Scott Hendershot. Coach Hendershot, back in December, hit his five-hundredth win as a wrestling coach here in Sioux Valley. And Coach Gallagher has now hit his six-hundredth win. I think he's on six-oh-four right now because it happened December ninth. He's had several wins since then, especially with the duels, those each count towards wins, team wins and everything. So it's an incredible achievement for, for each of them of where they are. And I, I would tell you, probably one of their, one of the things they're most proud of is exactly what you talked about, Anthony, is the ones coming behind them. And, and who they have with Andrew and Andrew and Michael Choppy and Ross Potter and, you know. They're thrilled about who's coming behind them.
I'll state correctly, I believe that our is number four state.
I think it's two more.
It's un, unread. I'm going to ask the board, motion to enter to executive session to discuss being employed with these particular persons and matters being examined under federal law per se. Board may take action after executive session.
So both have the grounds.
Second. Motion made and seconded, there's no need to discuss. Being that there's none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?